Then they were gonna go from.
Okay.
That our safety and then and then jump over and do the third street to new co-op. And do that section there and then see where they're at for the fourth of July. So they didn't want to disrupt.
Oh, man.
Live parade.
Throw that parade into a tizzy.
You know, oh, for God's sakes. Well, we don't want to upset our volunteers because, you know, that's who's running that operation. So, yeah, keep those folks happy.
All right. I fled to the United States of America and to the reality which stands one nation under God in this law.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good to see you. Few people here again. Times it's kind of lonely up here. There's nobody sitting up in this.
But you always sound sad.
Your protege just drove in. He's late. Okay. Need anything that Jim added or thinking away?
No, I don't.
Supposed to do for.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All carried. Prove the minutes April twenty ninth.
Minutes appear to be correct from last meeting. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All carried. General public.
General public. Okay, thank you. So, Dan, I'm sure I'm here as a representative of the urgency management commission for Humboldt County. I just wanted to take a minute and recognize publicly recognize our EMA director Kyle Bissell. He, which he knew nothing about today, but with the the job he's really been doing, I think. Kyle's been here since August of twenty two, so I would venture to guess that he's probably been as good or of employee as we've had available throughout the county since that time. And then I just the last several weeks. You know, with tornado outbreak, I think, which was three weeks ago. I know there was a lot of time on Kyle's part and the storm spiders and things like that on the western side of the county, you know, so there's a lot that goes into this actually behind the scenes that people don't don't realize. I just wanted to let everyone know that, you know, we do have the right people in place, you know, and Kyle's doing a wonderful job. However, I wouldn't, I, I, I think I know Kyle well enough that we wouldn't say it's a one person job or anything like that because you've got, you know, good collaboration with the sheriff's department. And then also secondary roads and Ben and his crew in order to coordinate, you know, safety around the, the county. So there's a good communication there. I just wanted to thank Kyle and let the board know that, you know, things are, things are going well. And, and so I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention if there's any question. So.
Dan.
I agree. I second that. We appreciate the email you sent out on Sunday so that we're kind of up to date on what was all going on. So, thank you. You do an awesome job.
We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
I know Asian Brad Gates. I run into it whenever that. My way to him and he went right on down the road. Doing a good job. Thank you. We appreciate having somebody that is conscientious of the county and looks after our interests. I think we have six roads closed right now for flooding. It's not supposed to crest until tomorrow.
And if you, if you don't mind, that's exactly why I'm here is to give you guys that update and ask any questions if that's okay. Looks like Tuesday at one P M is when we should fall below the flood stage at nine point nine feet at that time. It's also going to be whatever rain we're coming in tonight. I'm expecting an inch here and an inch up north, which could impact those, those flood zones already. We are not going, I'm, I'm looking to keep all the roads closed that we do have, all six of those. Some of them are open as we speak. But again, we're going to get another inch of rain, so that could totally wipe, wipe, lift those road closures out if we're going to close them right back up again. Yeah, we've got six roads at this time. Any questions on any of what's going on, where we sit? What I'll be doing after when it's safe to get into some of these areas, I'm going to then start talking with farmers and asking what kind of damages that you could be looking at. And that could be. Don't think that we could push Humboldt County as a disaster area, but we could contribute to the state. And then the state could give money and then feed it out into the county. I'll be working on that over the next few weeks.
Just remind everybody that if you find a road closed sign, don't go around it. Don't try going through it and do not drive in water.
Absolutely.
You make big ruts on the gravel roads. It's soft and you'll just tear hell out of it. So please stay off the roads. It's closed. Go around. Work your way where you can.
Absolutely. Well said.
I was driving around looking at the floodwaters yesterday. And I found two just in Kasoot County, two road closed signs that somebody nailed it over, knocked them over. And I said, well, there ain't nothing I can do about them. I can't stand them up. So but there was two of them up there that somebody, one of them looked like it had hit. The other one was just laid over in the road. And you could see two hundred feet down and water across the road. So just a reminder, don't tear the roads up. It costs taxpayers dollars to fix them.
Ben gets mad.
Yeah. Anything else on that?
No, sir.
We appreciate your update. Keep us informed of what's going on.
I will do so.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you. Thank you all for your guidance.
Okay. Haley. Boy, boy, fun game discussion.
Alrighty, well, I'm Haley Kind. I'm a substance abuse counselor, mental therapist over actually in Emmitsburg. I am here today to talk to you guys about the opioid funds that each county has received from the kind of the opioid epidemic that has taken place. So I am currently working in multiple different counties, working on some prevention work and also getting resources out to people that don't have it. So what that looks like is I've been working with Allison quite closely on this. A lot of people, you know, some people don't qualify for state insurance, but also don't meet that threshold to be able to pay for an assessment or counseling, therapy, those types of things. And so what that looks like is we are able to use the funds from the opioid, opioid money to pay for that, to get them that gap funding. So that is kind of one way we're looking at potentially hopefully using it in Humboldt County. We actually do have someone we could use it on currently. And another piece that we've been doing is, I'm not, we've talked very briefly about the jails. But in Palo Alto County, we bought an iPad for the jail so that we can get services to people within our jail. And hopefully get that recidivism rate down just because we see those regulars, they don't get the, you know, the evaluations they need. And then they're sent back into the community and they're back in within a week. And that has been going very smoothly. I probably complete two a week within our jails over there to get them the services that they need. So that is just very briefly. I do have like financial pieces here for you guys broken up. But I'm not sure how familiar you guys are with the opioid money and the exhibits that you can use that funding for. I've done extensive research on making sure that we were following those different pieces and making sure that the funding is being used correctly. So it's used or lose it type of a thing. So just looking to hopefully get your guys' support behind that so we can get people the services that they need.
I mean, how I met Haley is they came and presented over in Pocahontas. We didn't, we didn't have a substance abuse provider over there. So I think last November I sat down with her and we came up with a plan. So Haley has, has gone and met with some individuals, like we have a system set up where from the school system, I'll go and pick the kids up. I'll bring them to my office. She goes and meets with them so that they're able to be seen because we have people obviously that live in the rural communities that come into Pocahontas County. So she's able to meet with the adolescent. She's also able to meet with individuals in our jail. We actually had somebody housed from Pocahontas County in the Palo Alto jail because we weren't able to keep him there and she went ahead and met with him. So how we look at this is it's a great piece because we are, you know, it's a pair of last resort, kind of like how we utilize mental health. When we have somebody that's maybe incarcerated, that's from modest state, that's here for a long period of time that we're having difficulty within our justice system. Or if we have somebody that isn't qualifying for Medicaid, then we utilize this for the gap funding piece. So it's worked really, really well. It's been a very big blessing. The other piece that comes kind of with Haley is we also then refer, we have a psychiatric, a nurse practitioner, prescriber in her community that then zooms in. We've had somebody here in the Humboldt jail that we've had multiple times. And they've done wonders with him to keep him stabilized. And so then they're able to also provide that piece for medication as well.
And it helps it helps our law enforcement. It helps just every, you know, that the community too, just because law enforcement's being called out. What if a true, you know, like a really legitimate emergency comes in, not saying theirs isn't, but and they're, they're tied up on a call that they can't get to the next situation that needs their attention. Again, we are payer of last resort. So if they have Medicaid, I'm, I'm going to go, you know, I'm, I'm going to use those resources because we want to be able to utilize this money as much as possible and stretch it out for as long as we can to. So that's kind of a piece there. Any questions?
You have some prevention.
Yes.
Also that you've been working within the community and things that you can do to like posters and things that I can kind of found on that a little bit.
Yep. So Emmitsburg asked us to kind of go within their library in Iowa Lakes and put up prevention posters, which qualifies under those exhibits. And it's just, you know, those, those explaining what nicotine does to your body, what marijuana does to your body, what alcohol does to your body. And we've kind of placed those all through Iowa Lakes. And then the prevention work, I can do a program essentially that's twelve weeks long for one hour a week where I go into and meet with teens, at-risk youth and try to support them in figuring out, you know, if home life isn't the greatest, how do we change that cycle? You know, what is, how do we change this and so that they don't end up brimming down the path of substance abuse and ending up in our jails or long-term having those effects. And we are looking to hopefully do that next year in Pocahontas. I did do a course in like Algonah actually, and it went great. I did it at their alternative school and the kiddos still check in with me randomly when I see him in the community. So it's just being able to get that, that running is always a slow process.
Well, this was county specific money from this opioid settlement.
Correct.
Obviously, you're explaining that it has to be used for certain things and you're talking about some of the things. How much money did Humboldt County receive?
I think we're at thirty-five thousand. It's been sitting there. We still have additional increments that come in for the next six of eight years, five years, something.
I think it was.
Five or seven years.
Yeah. So we get certain increments. Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, you're good.
So we get to certain increments. So like, it depends on what the county, you know, they, I have a whole sheet that breaks every single county down in Iowa. But, you know, it depends. I think we've gotten six payments, we'll call them, from the state right now. But each county is so different. I, I can't tell you even what Palo Alto's at right now just because that.
But it's, it's county specific.
Yeah, right.
And is there any timeframe as far as money has to be used by?
Two thousand thirty, isn't it? Yes, two thousand thirty.
Okay, so you, you kind of mentioned that and I thought it was. So you have these programs and the things that can be used for, because there's a earmark for
Yeah.
what it can. Do you see that as not a problem and having the amount of money we end up receiving used by twenty thirty?
I don't even know if, I mean, I could try, right? But I, I think it'll, I think it will last. I mean, I think again, because it is that gap funding.
Yeah, funding.
Yeah, it's not, you know, all the time. And so, you know, there is, I know that C R F is over here, right? C R F, C F R, I always mix it up. It's over here too. And we have talked to, like, if they want some, you know, if they present to you guys too, obviously, it's not like, I get it, right? Like, it's, it's to use in the community.
For claim.
Yeah. And so, you know, hopefully it lasts for, you know, till twenty thirty, but I mean, I think it will, just because again.
How the claims are gonna work.
Well, and I, and I think I'll add this piece of, I, I think the more we get it out there because, you know, I think we have people that need this service and when they've called before and they don't meet the criteria or they have to drive down even to Fort Dodge, I think, you know, especially like with the referrals that I get, that's the majority. We have the dual, you know, mental health and substance abuse that go hand in hand. And making those referrals and maybe having some of these groups and getting that out there, I think we'll be able to increase our, our services that we're, that we provide here. And then for the claim process, so how it's done in the other counties and how it's done in Humboldt County, I mean, Pocahontas County is public health is still, they, they oversee the same substance abuse right now. So the claims will go through public health. So we have Haley in here in place of Kristen. And so they'll go through there and so that will determine any referrals that are made to make sure that they're Humboldt County residents, eligibility to meet all that criteria. And then once the claims are sent to public health office and they'll be sent to the owner's office for payment.
So it's going to be kind of a dual role with public health and, and you guys, right?
Cleaner.
Well, yeah, somebody.
Cleaner because, yeah, you have it done through. And as you know, regions are kind of up in grabs within the next year. So obviously, we would not want that role. So we would have it through.
They change, it's a huge.
Yeah, it would, it'd be, it makes more sense to go through public health. And I work with them quite a bit on all the referrals to begin with.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
So you feel that with this additional money, settlement money that everybody's getting, that you're going to be able to help more people and fill in, like you say, some of the gap things?
Yeah.
You know, show them some of the cracks that people may have been falling through.
Yeah. Well, the barrier that we have is we think when somebody's eligible for Medicaid, we think, well, that allows an all array of services. But what happens is, is people that are under a particular age, they consider that can still work or only eligible, what's called Iowa Health and Wellness, which is Medicaid that deals with all of your medical issues, but it does not, I think it's code B under there that doesn't do substance abuse. So let's say we have like, you know, a twenty-five-year-old male that needs these services and he's Medicaid technically eligible due to poverty and not having income. He's not eligible based on the MCOs for that substance abuse. So then they go without the services. So I think it'll help the gap of those individuals.
That's definitely, sounds like you're getting a foot to good use and thank you for all of that. I'm sure Rick and all. Do all this.
Well, we kind of have a precedent already. So now you guys are the second county, so it'll be easier.
Thanks for having a little bit of a little.
Yeah, it's worked really well in Palo Alto and in Pocahontas. And obviously I'll be in touch, you know, about like if the jail is wanting an iPad. That is something we can do. It just really depends on if the jail wants it. Our jail was like, yes, please, like anything to help them.
Corey called too while I was, while I was here. So I'm going to take her down and have her meet Corey because so far they've zoomed in through, they use the booking room and they zoom in through the computer because they've met with people already in the jail that have been on Medicaid already. But so, yeah, so hopefully we'll get an iPad. It'll make it a lot cleaner and they'll be able to to do this.
And that iPad will only be specific just for that they can't get on.
Yep, we lock it down.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah.
That was good news.
We need it. We need it here.
Any other questions that I can answer?
Anything you want to add to it or anything on public health side or anything that?
Thank you for picking the time to update for everybody because it's good to know. We knew we're getting this. Now it's nice to hear how.
Yeah, they're kind of sitting all over the state. And so, yeah, it's nice to be able to actually implement them.
Yes.
Most counties haven't been.
Money and it sounds like it's really positive. So that's, it's good news.
Yeah, as much prevention as we can do, that's, I mean, their biggest key with the money is prevention.
That's good.
You know, how do we lower that recidivism rate and get the younger, the youth help too?
That's awesome.
We asked on Friday when the question of will they be able to service Humboldt, beans are taking care of two other counties, as you said, they didn't, she didn't think they'd have a problem.
Yeah, if I get enough people, I can even do a full day over here. Just depends on the caseload and.
And I think the key piece too is that when we look at substance abuse, it's vaping is added into that now and she can do services for vaping. And we have so many kids vaping and so many vapes confiscated. And so I think that that's a huge, big crisis that we're dealing with. And I like that we're able to utilize that too for that component. So.
This is just a.
That's just like what our, so that's what the hospital bills as. And so that's like.
People are dealing with this.
Yes. And so like, if you, like, just for the assessment, I think it's four hundred and fifty-three, right? So, I mean, I'm like, I can just have that money laying around to pay for, on a medical bill, you know, so imagine, I mean, the price turns them off and it just sucks that our healthcare is turned into such a high cost, you know, so.
It does.
And if they do come in and like for a need to meet and they're not on Medicaid and they can actually be eligible, then we can try to work together with getting them on that. So maybe we pay that initial assessment. It's kind of how we did, okay, that we'll pay that assessment and then we'll get them eligible or get them on, you know, and then they'll be able to pay through a different healthcare insurance for like the services is kind of what we're trying to do.
It's kind of an illustration. It is an expensive program, but it is to utilize some money to get them into these programs.
Yes.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your thanks a lot.
Thank you guys.
Yes, we appreciate your help and have a health, we guys do an amazing job. So thank you.
So are we gonna take action on that or you?
I'm gonna make the motion. I'm gonna make the motion to have Haley. I don't know why I've got a mental block on that with opioid funding. For mercy one, yes.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. All carried.
Awesome. So will we have a contract or twenty eighty or? We don't in the other counties. I mean, it's not that we can't have one. Because it's, you know, at any basis, we didn't do one in Pocahontas or Palo Alto. So if you, I mean, if we wanted your contract, we can.
What we did in Pocahontas is we did have a policy. They just identified it. We didn't necessarily follow the contract that was signed with a policy identifying the rates and what they would be utilized for in the process. And then it's just billed a repeat for service.
Okay, yeah, just so we have a record of something.
Of course. Can you get that set up for us?
I will do that. Okay.
This one also be available that the school could join in, right?
Correct. We're gonna look at that this summer and try to get the meeting set up here. I think we've got something in the works. So.
But I just wanted.
And I invited Jim to come so that he could hear everything. So. So hopefully we can get something going with the schools and.
Well, we knew it was getting towards the end of the year.
Right. So we knew we couldn't do anything right.
Hear the numbers from grandkids. We only got twenty-four days, twenty-three, whatever the days are. So I knew it wouldn't be doable this year, but at least we could talk and hopefully get something in the works if the school would be interested. So.
I'll be interested.
We do.
Awesome.
Awesome. We'd love to hear it. So thank you all for coming.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
My first grade told me how to build a school.
First grader.
Yeah, you're.
Items for you for today's agenda. The first item that I have is to award the two projects that we let last Monday. Award the projects to Rognus Brothers Excavating of Lake Mills for two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
I took my glasses off to see that one.
Extremely competitive bids. We had seven bidders on this project. Four of them were very tight. The pricing on the boxes was actually cheaper than the price book that I had gotten from Humboldt Concrete or Creex, whatever they want to call themselves now. So I don't know where the boxes are going to be supplied from. I guess this is probably not going to be them. That they found a cheaper competitor to build, but it's still a specification
Yeah.
that they built too. But, yeah, I mean.
One was significantly lower.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So the trends for a ten by ten box cover have been steering towards roughly a hundred and seventy thousand dollars piece. And these places came in at hundred and thirty, hundred and thirty-five. I know the contractors are hungry. I know that there's less work this summer than there has been in previous years. I don't know if that's the driving force, but I wish I had another five or six
Yeah, that'd be.
sitting on a shelf that I could just send out for letting right now. Yeah.
All right, I'll make the motion to award projects. Let's see, one seven one five zero seven and L C one oh two two nine oh to Rognus Brothers for that two sixty-seven fifty-six twenty.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
Actually, it's twenty-five. Twenty-five cents.
Yeah, twenty cents. I dip in the nickel if we get it.
No, we didn't vote on that yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
All.
The next item that I have on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the county right away for Cory Benz. And Benz Excavating For Harry and Jerry Myers to install an intake in the right of way. A quarter of a mile north of Highway three on Delaware Avenue. This is right in the same vicinity of the drainage wall closure projects that they're doing. Uh, on Myers's property north of Highway three. Uh, they're gonna be doing some dirt work and some grading. It's gonna be shifting where water flows to. But the northwest corner of their parcel has always stayed wet. And they're planning on doing some pattern tiling in that area. Cory's comment is the reason that that northwest corner always stays wet. It is because water sits in the road dish there. And he wants to put an intake in and tie it to the tile that they're running. To the southeast, so.
Is this an existing or is this gonna be a new tile?
This will be a new tile.
New that they're installing with their project.
Yeah, so from the way I understand it is all this tile is basically gonna run to a. Uh, a new cistern where they pump it back up on a lift station where they pump it up on top of. Uh, the levy that they're building.
That lifts up is becoming more and more popular, isn't it?
Well, this is a necessity over there due to the fact of closing the egg wells.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, if we're gonna have a drain, uh, they have to pump it up and overdo burn that they're gonna build to keep the water in.
Well, it's an interesting half hour feeling, right? We're gonna take a look.
Mike Nag was supposed to be up there Friday at two thirty and something. I think something came up with all this flooding and stuff going on even somewhere else. But he is gonna come back up and we would like some supervisors to show up.
Cause that is the last one, isn't it? That needs to get.
Yeah, there's some of them, I think, that are being closed here. So he is gonna come back up someday and I'll let you know.
Everything's all right with Cory with that? He's all these paperwork's in order?
We've got all this paperwork. We've got his insurance.
I would make the motion for the approval.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Can I interrupt this for one minute?
Sure.
Because we're talking about working her right away. Do we approve a full of someone to work south of Thor in a right of way?
How far south?
Half mile. There were that gas line comes through.
Uh, it's probably us. That was gonna be part of my update. Uh, so. Yeah, we could, we can go ahead and talk about it now. So the first, uh, the first mile south of Thor. Where the dredge ditch is on the east side of the road. We've got nine tile or culvert locations that cross the roadway there. And I'd say probably six or seven of them, you feel when you're driving northbound. Where the shoulder feels like it drops off. And that's either due to a connection to steel. Or a collapse of clay tile. We are in the process of getting a quote from subsurface to go in and put a UV liner. Inside all of those clay pipe. Essentially what they do is we have to expose the tile on both sides of the road. They'll get the proper size of it. And measure the length of what they need. And then they'll give us a quote for how much it's gonna cost for them to put in. Basically, it's a slip liner that they fill up with air and then they run a. Uh, it looks like a go-kart with a bunch of UV lights on them. And it just goes back and forth inside that until it hardens. On the interior side.
Like slip lining sewer lines.
Right. And it, it adds additional strength to the old clay tile and ensures that we've got proper drainage. But like I said, there is, I think, nine locations in that one mile, so.
I guess, you know, went by there. I seen somebody's been doing a lot of digging. I hadn't heard of anything.
Yeah, if there's any drainage district money, we'll. Pretty, I'm pretty sure it's all private. Yeah, so we're just. We're, we're in the process of jetting them and cleaning them out right now. And then the gentleman from. Uh, subsurface is supposed to be meeting with, uh, the Hardy shop this morning. Guys should be out there now. But that's, that's what we're doing. Right now. The next item that I have on the agenda is to approve a quote to close the landfill one. Monitoring wells. Uh, to Schumacher well about going on. We had received three quotes as of the end of. Reception time on Tuesday. On Thursday, I did receive a fourth quote from Terricon. But theirs was significantly higher. Terricon's was higher than the other three combined.
And they would have been twice as high as that.
Add, yeah, add those three plus another five grand is roughly Terricon.
Very awful expensive for every.
So.
Looks like Schumacher well is a pretty competitive bid.
Did local company.
They certainly closed a lot of wells. I'd make a motion that we approve. Quote to and award that to Schumacher well.
You all second that?
Any other discussion?
Um, like I say, that'll eliminate, eliminate all the well testing. So that gets really expensive. So that's good to have that done.
Good.
And from going forward, we just do, basically we'll do a walk-through with the DNR. And they'll tell us, oh, we need a little dirt here, here, fill in that hole, cause they just hate standing water. So if there's any ever settling, so I'm gonna put a little dirt in and seed it. So that's pretty vital.
And I haven't looked in the hole after all this rain that we've.
I haven't been out there either since we had this rain, but it was pretty much.
It was dry last time I was.
Last time I was there, it was about four inches of water in it.
Favor of that? Hold Gary.
The last item that I have on the agenda is discussion and possible actions on the Dakota City multi-departmental building. Uh, we received bids last Thursday. For that project. Uh, I gave you, I believe, two separate bid tabs. Uh, the first one was the three bids that were received. Last Thursday. The two on the end were the bids from the previous year. The low bidder this time around was Bertie and Sons. For five hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars. And then obviously we had additional option items. Uh, those optional items were, uh, Wayne's coating, exterior finish. Uh, the option to insulate and interior steel sheet, the walls and secondary road. Alternative heating options for the Sheriff's Bay. And adding a radiant heat line to the secondary road portion. Those were kind of à la carte options that we had added to the original bid.
The Wayne's coating, that's more of a cosmetic thing to make the building look a little.
Little nicer.
Little nicer. Being it is smack in the middle of Dakota City, I think it's something we should look at. Uh, just to make appearances look a little nicer.
The.
The Sheriff's Bay upgrade to a different heating system. I don't know if we can justify that. All the other options, we'll have to run a few dehumidifiers in there just. And, um. They have to have something in there for the summer to have the humidity.
We've got a couple of scenes and fans scheduled, but. Yeah, you'd, you'd be. You wouldn't have AC or, uh, air-to-air exchange.
Couldn't that create a problem with you?
I mean, if it's utilized the way that I've been told that it's going to be, it's not gonna be an issue.
You talking about this maybe adding the Wayne's coating for appearance?
Yes.
Well, I'd like the option of ten and twelve and pay for it out of secondary roads budget. The insulation and, uh, steel sheeting of the interior walls and adding a, a single line of radiant heat. What that would give us the option of doing would be, uh, storing our tile jetter, our hydroceder. Uh, our, our pumps, our water tanks. We go through the process of, of winterizing all of that equipment, but this would eliminate. Uh, a possible chance of freezing and ruining equipment. I, I think for the cost, the thirty thousand, I mean, it. The equipment that we park in there is worth more than that.
Would you propose just paying for that on a secondary road?
Yes, yes. Yep. If the board is fine with it, I would propose paying for it out of our, uh. Eight hundreds account. For property.
What would the alternate heat be on the Sheriff's Bay? That'd also be an EMA.
No, this is just.
Wasn't that air conditioning?
That was like a, uh, basically a forced air furnace with central air to keep the humidity down. In the building.
Well, it's something you might think about because I remember a few years ago, they had that little convertible sitting over there. It was in Rutland and then it was over here and if the inside of it looked like it had been so moisted, it was. Mold growing on stuff. That was a nice little car. So I know the people that come and got it wasn't happy with it. It was like no, they.
Four storage locations of that time.
Right.
They put it in Rutland, closed the door and never opened the door again. As the seasons change in a blocked building, you get moisture. Would have been if we'd turned the heat on, but.
Oh, it was, uh, really bad.
So what about putting ceiling, big, those bigger ceiling fans in to have air movement? Would that?
We've got, uh, two ceiling fans proposed per location.
Yes.
I mean, you could, you could upgrade to, uh, I think the brand is Big Ass Fan. But I mean, they're, they're like twenty or twenty-five thousand per, per fan, but it is a very large fan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know some of you guys. But I didn't know they were that pricey.
I, I believe they're.
That's the case, you might as well put in the, the heat and air conditioner if they're that, that expensive.
Did you get any?
Pair air is the other one.
I, my question is, when you talk with these contractors, did you have a start date and an inflation and all of that?
No.
No.
Bertie and Sons, I mean, when I talked to Matt, when he dropped his bid off, uh, he had quite a bit of. Work lined up for the year, but. Like them as a group talked and they're like, how do you not throw a bid on, on something local?
Ah, great. So, okay, just curious, I think our.
I just, I just had a question from the EMA standpoint. Thank you for recognizing me. Uh, the dimensions of the. Bay for the EMA square footage bin, what, what do you have on that? We just signed a rental agreement with the landlord for our existing storage. I just wanted to make sure that it was comparable to what we had.
Sixty by sixty.
Sixty by sixty.
It's considerably larger.
Okay, great.
But after Tyler's got all of his recognition, I don't know, maybe.
Is that pretty equivalent?
Is the courthouse in the same?
Yes, that, that, or that silver trailer out there and. Stuff will be also locked in there.
How about? You have flags and stuff like that?
I think the flag bowls are gonna be in, uh.
The trailer.
Yeah, I'm working on a new trailer for that.
Oh, good, cause that one's.
Well, I pulled it across the blocks here one day.
Yeah.
Empty. I heard a bang and I looked back and here's the back half of it.
Dragon?
No, it was gone. Laying in the road and it hit the pipe and got it. So now when I welded it back together, it kinda dog. And you cannot back a dog-legged trailer.
Just a follow-up. So Ben, your proposal on the sheeting and insulation and radiant heat. Would that be for the entire building or just the bay, the bay that you're responsible for?
So you're already scheduled for sheeting and, and heat as well as the sheriff's department? It was just secondary road, secondary roadside that we had. Spec as no heat, no insulation. But ask for the option to add it.
Okay.
So.
I just, I just found wondering what we were, what kind of facility we were looking at.
Uh, granite countertops. Yes, lofted.
Some of that gets printed. Cause I already got people that are mad about their taxes.
Well, and do we?
This is not tax money though.
I know it's not tax money, but you still go, they don't always read the whole article.
Most of it?
Yes.
Well, I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time, for three, four years. I would see. What I'm hearing is on the county side that because of the exterior and it's a twenty-eight hundred dollar option, I would agree with Rick. It's gonna be there for a long time. It is in the middle of Dakota City. That would make sense to add. Secondary roads is offered, paying for their heating. I would allow them to do that. To maintain their feasible equipment. And with that, I would, if we have an action item on this. I would suggest that we award this, cause it's gonna be less money to Bertie and Son Construction with that, uh, with that caveat.
Question. What if Dean said he would pay his twenty thousand for his heat and cooling?
Oh, to change that up?
I'm just. It's a thought. I'm not.
He was concerned about it.
Twenty minutes after this hits the air, we're all gonna get a phone call. And I'm, I'm not saying that, that heating and air conditioning, but it's not like they're gonna have meetings in there.
It is gonna be storing evidence in there. Uh, we're hoping to lock up some of the, uh. Files from the courthouse that are. Gotta be secure. And kept forever.
Can I put him on speaker?
You can try.
Are we shooting our foot to say twenty-two thousand and all?
But honestly, I, maybe, I don't know if they took that into consideration, the reduction of the, uh, two.
Can I put you on speaker with the board? We got bids for the building. And there is an option for your. So hang on, I'll put you on speaker.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I was, I forgot about.
You still there?
Yes, I am here.
Where the question the board has is in your portion of the building. Having a climate control for humidity. Is that crucial? Or is just, we are, you know, the original bid was just for, uh, radiant heat. You know, for the winter, winter months. They have it as an alternate of twenty thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars to. Basically have it.
To switch to a forced air.
Furnace with central air to keep the humidity down.
That's an additional twenty grand.
Sounds awful high to me.
Boy, oh boy. Uh, no, I, I. Ooh, boy, oh, boy. Uh, no, I I can, I can probably get something else to work, so no, I don't spend that extra twenty. No, absolutely not.
Okay.
Okay.
No, we'll, we'll figure something else out, a lot cheaper than that, so.
Perfect, that works.
Yeah, no, no, don't need it.
All right.
We just wanted to input.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Well.
I don't. May I ask you another question? Well, so I was, um, I think Ben mentioned that as as of now, Birdie and Sons was non-committal as a starting date.
Right.
Is that correct, Ben?
There's still a completion date, that's.
There is a completion date on this. Okay, so by lot, by awarding that, if if and do you you do award the contract to Birdie and Sons, does that lock in the prices today then and they are?
Yes, it's a bid.
Okay, so, okay, so even if the market were to change, materials go up between now and then, they're they're locked in at the price that they've committed to it. Okay.
When is the completion date?
Uh, December fifteenth, I believe.
Of this year?
Yes.
Well, before the snow flies.
Yeah.
With the options on there that would come out, six hundred and seven thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Well, with Ben's offer to pay those.
Yeah, we would only add twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, to the counter portion here.
Right.
What is that funding?
But if there's money in that fund, why take Ben's taxpayer money and so not use it? Way I look at it.
Well, our general budget is pretty tight. That's what concerns me the most, and that's where that money's sitting.
Right.
Right now, all of that funding has been absorbed into the general basic as lost revenue, if I remember right.
But when you come back and Bruce Reimer's forgot to drain whatever and it froze, we're still obligated to re.
Right.
Repair it.
Yeah.
So.
Like I said, I I see the value of that uh on the secondary roadside of of things. So I'm I'm willing to to cover that thirty. Um, thankfully, I mean, it it comes from the same fund that I that I put uh uh that I set aside for drainage valuations and we haven't had the major drainage projects lately, so.
So you you have funding available for us.
So I think that's why I made that motion that that's fair. I appreciate that thought process on that.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Yeah, and the fact that we're only adding the the Wayne's Wayne's coating, the twenty-eight hundred dollars to the original price.
Well.
So I was your, I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you, Rick.
Any other discussions?
We get it all the amount that is something. Just add the twenty-eight hundred, this five seventy-four, one eighty-six.
Not doing the insulation and heat for?
No, well, that'll come out of mine.
That'll come out of his budget.
But the total.
It's just twenty-eight to that.
The total expenditure, the um bid letting would be for the total of it.
Right.
So. Five hundred and seventy-six. Uh, eighty-eight. Eight hundred and eighty.
And the total bid amount is six hundred and seven four eighty.
It's the same thing.
Okay.
Four eighty-nine.
All right, any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Hi.
All. Here.
Thank you, Mark.
So did we get your, did you find, did you play, could you? We still.
I never had an option over play.
Good.
Talked with Sam and said he had a file.
Okay.
He may have a file.
Yep. Um, did they want to sell or did they want to exchange?
I don't know. I I haven't talked with them. I just heard that they have a file.
Okay, I'll call Joel.
And see if you'd like to exchange, cuz we got lots of black dirt. I know, black dirt is very valuable.
Anything else, Ben?
Uh, as Kyle told you, we spent most Friday running around throwing barricades and signs up. Um. Did you give them a rundown of everything that's closed?
Hmm, yes.
All right.
Telling them, even though Arizona is open, we're expecting to have another inch of rain, so why not leave everything?
We're gonna, we're gonna leave everything out where it's at right now. I know uh we did send a blade out to Brad gave first thing this morning uh to see if there's anything that needed to be touched up. But my guess is he ran into water on this, on the diagonal south.
Yep.
Uh, so turned around, but he probably bladed Arizona just to smooth it up for anybody that's gonna be traveling on it between now and when it comes back over the road.
Yeah.
Tombstone, we'll stay underwater for quite a while. Murray Bridge. We'll see what's left of the road on the east side when we're done. Um.
That's a maintenance.
I heard it went over one sixty-nine north of St. Joe.
That's what I heard too. I didn't know if that was true or not.
I don't think so. They come down there yesterday and it uh I couldn't see where it was lapping up on the blacktop and I've seen it lap that blacktop before.
Yeah.
And I couldn't see where it had washed up.
They had that on the news the other night when you were on Kyle, I thought they showed pictures of one sixty-nine. It didn't look like it was over yet.
Yeah.
Maybe it wasn't then.
What would they caution about when the rain, this next rain probably will?
We put barricades out for Foster Bridge because anticipation and future flooding looked like it was going to get up onto the blacktop, so we just had signs that said uh road close to through traffic, but I don't believe it did get up on the blacktop at Foster.
Yeah, it was about six inches from getting there last time.
Yep. Uh, Hamilton's is getting close to South of Town, so that'd be the the river road south of Gosh. Travel's up there. Yep. But.
It's amazing how fast it can get wet.
Yeah, yeah, it uh.
Three years of no rain.
Four feet pretty much instantly, so.
Yeah, you can't see the Jesus Rock down.
Yeah.
On there. We come back from town the other day and you could not see it.
I just was wondering if that feels like.
Have you ever heard of the?
Never heard that expression before, Sandy. What?
Really? West of Badger towards uh.
Why would I write Bruce as up to say?
No, I'm just saying that every time you go, I think everybody looks to the north to see if.
Yeah.
So Jesus saves on it?
Somebody put that, it's, and when it gets
It's over that.
Rubbed off, somebody gets, I don't know, like to see the person that goes out and.
It's the address, guys. This is where Farm Aid used to be. Farm Aid Road, so.
Go east, towards Badger.
Yeah.
And it's on the north side, on the east side of the.
Clean over it, but you can't see the rock. And before, when we went on Friday, you could see the, just the tip of it.
Yeah. Two, two weeks ago, you could see the bottom of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
They should have.
You live a shelter.
Well, damn, I thought everybody knew.
Well, just I keep us in the loop, I guess, if someone else, I know you're always sending messages, but.
Surveyors uh will probably start seeing some activity over by Hardy-Renwick area. Tail end of this week, beginning of next week. They'll be in to start doing their uh construction survey for the overlay project.
Okay.
We don't have any railroad crossings.
We do have one.
Getting repaired this year?
Oh, not repaired, but we go up to one.
We go up to two of them.
Two of them.
Yeah, one by Renwick and one in the town of Hardy.
Well, that's usually then when we get our pavement done, then they'll wanna come in next year and rip out the.
We've asked, I mean, we've asked if they wanna raise the rail at the same time that we're doing our work. So hopefully that doesn't happen, but.
If they do that, are they responsible then for?
No.
Really?
So they they could come in two years after and raise the rail and what they end up doing is boogering, like boogering in a little bit of asphalt on either side so that it's a rough crossing. But. Yeah.
The river is always fun.
Yeah.
In between rains, we'll continue rocking the roads and blading them and hopefully the four-letter F word doesn't declare Humboldt County as a disaster area, so.
It'll dry up again.
Yep.
Anything else? Anybody got anything for Ben?
All right.
Uh, you're out.
I'll lead into this with, but hopeful this will be one of the more calm recent damn discussions we've had in a while. Uh, and honestly, just kinda wanted to give you guys a heads up, just kinda get you up to speed with what's been going on. Uh, the Conservation Board met last Thursday, had a special meeting. Um, several members of the River Development Group were there also, had a real good discussion. Uh, at the end of the meeting, um, the idea was thrown out there to look into transferring ownership and then possibly applying for the FEMA grant. I guess I'm referring to the the intent to purchase that uh Red and Dev and River Development presented to both boards a couple of weeks ago, I guess. Um, so no action was taken. I've done a little research, reached out to Homeland Security to find out if that is um allowable. The response that I got was that it is allowable. Is that kinda what you found out too, Susan? Okay, like, I'm gonna speak. Correct me, okay. Um, so with that said, we're gonna have another special meeting tomorrow to vote on whether or not to sell the dam to River Development. Um. I guess, and then at that point, we would come back to you guys. You guys have the power to approve or deny that recommendation. Um. I guess, looking forward, I know one of the questions that came up was what happens if fifteen years down the road um, the river group disbands, something happens, and will it? Who knows? Um, but I reached out to Allers and Cooney to find out the answer to that question. And the answer they gave me was that um responsibility would revert to the DNR. There's nothing in uh any law where ownership would revert back to the county. So basically, if ownership was transferred, um the county essentially would wash their hands of the dam for good if that was their desire. So.
Did you ask them about liability, Allers and Cooney about liability, like if something happens and there isn't enough, I mean, are, is the liability gonna come back on the county then?
No, um liability is a big deal. That is something that is included in, I have a oh, an intent to purchase here from Allers and Cooney. River Development would be one hundred percent responsible for all liability after transfer, ownership was transferred.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And what if nothing happens to the dam then? I mean, what if they don't come up with the money? I mean, we've heard three different dollar amounts and we've not seen any hard facts on what the true S, I don't, I I haven't seen any hard facts on what the true money is. That I'm concerned about that.
After they own it, they could do what they wanted to do.
Mm-hmm.
That's, I mean, there's no perfect solution, probably Sandy. I mean, I think if there was, we'd have found it by now.
Right, exactly. I guess my concern is the, I mean, I know there's FEMA money out there and different things, but if they don't have the money still and they can't get the private donations from, I mean, they don't even have any pledges.
At that point, I would say the DNR probably would step in and they could recommend these repairs be made, um potentially find them, and if it's not being taken care of, the DNR could come in and basically remove the dam.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't. River has been very passionate about the dam. I think they will follow through. That's just my feeling in talking to Gary, Brett, Susan. But that, again, that's my opinion, who's to say?
Yeah.
Um, circling back maybe to the FEMA grant, I should elaborate on that a little more. Um. If that was applied for, the county would have to be the applicant technically. If money was awarded, that money would go to the county and then it would be transferred to the River Development Group. The county would act as a pass-through. But as I understand, the river would write the grants um oversee the project. Um, basically, the county would simply receive the money and then cut a check out to River Development. Is that kind of?
I understand that.
Okay.
Now, the DNR, um, they did that other study and that, but are they really actually for? I mean, do they agree with it? Even though they did it, are they in favor of it?
The DNR, I mean, candidly, would like to see all the dams in Iowa taken out.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And they're very careful with how they word that, but at the end of the day, that would be their preference. Um, I've gotten to know Nate Ugavine pretty well throughout this process. He's flexible. Um, he realizes this is a little different animal than anything he's dealt with anywhere else in Iowa.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as long as there is some fish passage, muscle passage, that sort of thing in included in whatever is done, Nate would be willing to work with whatever else they have in mind, River Development has in mind. That makes sense to kind of answer your question, okay? So, again, I'm just.
Right.
I don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow. We'll see. This thing is flipped how many times.
Yeah.
But I just was gonna give you a heads up that I might be on your agenda again next Monday.
Next Monday. We always appreciate the heads up.
Yes.
Prior information.
Yep, and it, everything happened so fast. Thursday, I mean, there was a point in the meeting where I wasn't sure how things were gonna go. And at at the end, um, I guess no one had really considered and me included, I thought you would have to, the county would have to own the dam throughout that FEMA application process to make it legal, to make it kosher. And I remember if it was Will or who threw that out there, that how about we transfer ownership now and then apply for the FEMA money?
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, that was kind of a game changer there at the end of the meeting. And so everything just kind of, I don't know, it happened so quickly. I didn't have a chance to reach out to everybody on Friday, so I thought just jump on the agenda and give you a group update.
Good. Appreciate it.
Did you have a question?
Well, I I wonder if this will affect the application. Or not so much the application, but the the selection, cuz this is, just because you apply doesn't mean you're gonna get the money.
Very competitive.
It's very competitive. There's a small pile of money and probably a ton of people after it.
I know the fire department has applied for a couple FEMA grants and they make it to this round, next round, next round, and then I don't think they've ever gotten any funding, but I guess you don't know if you don't try either.
Right.
So I know you, I think you've been in close contact with Homeland Security, had a good relationship there, so um it's worth a shot, probably.
All right.
But.
So that's, unless you have questions.
Well. The county's involvement with this would be about the amount of a pass-through for a FEMA grant if with another group applying for it.
Yes.
And then whether that's successful or is not successful, the county is done with it.
And then whether that's successful or is not successful, the county has done with it.
Ownership has already been transferred.
And the county is not getting it back. We are not liable per Sandy's question, which is a very valid question. So it's between whichever group. And the D N R, which would be the state. Current, it's their deal.
Correct.
So the county is essentially, because Iowa's making suspicion, I'm not on the conservation board, but. That they are washing their hands of this if they so choose, and that is their thought process. So this, it's a done deal.
And I mean, I think the way the conservation board looks at it is if River Development's successful, it's a great thing for Humboldt County. Wonderful, fantastic. If things don't go quite like they planned, um. It's probably gonna end up being taken out, which was one of the options on the table for us anyway.
Not at any county.
But there would be no county expense included in that.
And it's honestly, that's what you hear from the, the community is, don't spend my taxpayer dollars.
And I've, I've heard that too, Rick. Yeah.
Most everybody is either for it or don't spend my taxpayer money on it. So this does sound like a win-win for both sides.
Kind of a meet in the middle, probably best case scenario for both sides. And that's again, my personal opinion, not a attempt to.
Yeah.
Influence you guys, but.
The county is, you know, gives the river group their support. Morally through this, I think it will help their grants if we write letters of. We're, we're behind them to proceed.
Yep.
You know.
And there'd be, I guess, some details to work out, you know, with Trish and how that money is. Funneled through here. That's not my area of expertise, so maybe between.
That's, that's. One, that's this FEMA grant you're speaking of. Many other grants aren't on them.
Yes, because FEMA really is the only one. That you, it has to be city county owned in order to be eligible to apply, that, at least that I'm aware of. So that's kind of a, it's unique.
Yeah. If there is other grants out there, is the county willing to?
No.
Help them to buy for them?
That's what I'm driving at. It's not.
There.
Yes, they're talking about having their own grant writers so that no one in the county is stressed out or has anything to do with it. They, they, they have someone they've talked to, right?
Well, what I'm saying is if, if another grant. Pops up someplace. Will the county write a letter of support?
That's a question for the rest of this group and probably my con- conservation board, Dave. I mean, I, I don't know that I can answer that. You're looking at me, but I, I wish I could, but I'm not gonna, I can't. So.
May I ask you?
You're almost at the, a lot of the most.
The grant is denied to the new ownership, then what's the new ownership's path forward then? I mean, does the D N R, do they come in time and take ownership and then remove the dam or what?
Not immediately, I believe. And again, Susan, I don't want to speak, but. I think your plan would be to fundraise and try to move forward that way. It's just, I think you're more looking at trying to tap into a pot of money that wouldn't have to be. From a local source, right? Yep.
We applied to Murray Bridge for.
Right.
Years.
Yeah. The one out after one, most of that, um, and try, you know, over ten.
Wouldn't it become such a safety issue that D N R would step in and need something to be done?
Dan, I think that would be, uh, years down the road, for one, um. River would probably have to basically do nothing, which I don't think that's gonna happen. So I don't, I don't see that scenario playing out, but. You know, I guess anything could happen as unlikely as that is. I don't.
So they're decided path forward, they can do things in increments then, rather than one specific. You know, sequence of events to remedy the problem then in a sense?
Yes. Yep, and obviously there would be permitting involved, even if it was done incrementally. But that would, if that's was their choice, they could do that, yes.
The D N R would have to approve each step.
Yes.
Yep.
Isn't any different than we, we, the county on it. Right? We can't just walk there and do whatever we want without talking to the D N R.
Right.
Because they operate it, they control the. Don't, you still control the gates up at Rutland?
Yeah.
Open and close when they say pull the plug, so.
We have an operational plan that has. Everything included. And I know Brett does have a, a good relationship with Nate Hugavine too, so I. I think things would go relatively smoothly there as far as the permitting, I would guess. But, good question, Dan.
Flood plain, it still leaves us in the flood plain though.
If the homes above there that.
Putting it down and, um. You know, doing the option two or even option three.
Yep.
Would have taken us out of the flood plain, correct? Or most of it, I don't know if all of it, but most of it.
Through the seven foot. Uh, crest reduction that we decided on was decided on because it did take everything out of the flood plain.
Yeah. Allowing for more grant funding. Or if you want that.
Yeah, um, you would be eligible for the same FEMA grant that River would be applying for.
Okay.
Be similar but different. That makes sense.
Other, and plus other grants that would be out there, we'd have a better chance probably of getting.
Yep. So.
I'd be curious, when is the meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow at noon, yep.
Won't be interesting. Do what they come up with, because I, my opinion, and I think the majority of the board, it's always been the, the conservation board for years. Has stopped jurisdiction and made decisions and through more recent history, since all this has come up. You know, we've been supportive because I think the conservation board has acted judiciously in their decisions. And with Dan Lake, you've come to us or the board's come to us and we've, you know, gone along with that, so.
Yep, no, but I know on the agenda it says possible action, which I think we.
Goes through the conservation board.
Things moving, but I feel more comfortable bringing a recommendation to you from the conservation board.
Been twenty years, I think we can wait a week.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's typically what we.
Was just kind of a.
But again, we appreciate that. Free information about what they're facing.
Yep, so that's all I'm trying to do. Just make sure everybody's on the same page or give you a chance to think it through if you do have some reservations. So. And. The second item on the agenda, um, approved resolution in support of Webster and Humboldt County Transportation Alternative Program Grant. To connect the Prairie Rivers Trail System and the Three Rivers Trail System, per recommendation of. How late? Um, that pertains to.
From Badger all the way to our trail.
Yes, yep, which we've talked about that, I guess, several times. I don't think that's probably a huge shock to any of you.
Do we have closer roads to do that?
Dave, I hope not. I hope we're able to get.
That's a pain.
I don't know how many times I went to Ford Dodge through Badger and thought, I don't know, and you turn around and head back east and go there by Kennedy.
Yeah.
We have met with Webster County, um, Rick and Eric. Forget the name of the Webster County Supervisor, Austin, I think was his first name.
Austin.
Austin.
Yes, he was.
Um, kind of talk through this. Since then, Matt and I have talked, we decided to apply for the twenty twenty eight TAP money and that amount would be one point one million. It's about a four million dollar project and that would be total between the two counties. Um, so we would each be on the hook for, you know, roughly two million each. Um, there are other grant opportunities out there, um, the State Recreational Trails Fund. Uh, is a very good opportunity for us, um, the legislature. Believe allocated that at seven point five million this year, which is larger than what it typically is. So I know Matt. Really wants to go after that pretty hard. Um, I think we'll have a strong application because if, if this connection's made, it will be the longest. Continuous connective trail in the state of Iowa outside of the Des Moines metro area. We're not gonna compete with that.
Yeah, we can't compete.
You would have over seventy miles that would be connected together, so that's a. Pretty strong selling point with any application you're gonna throw out there. Obviously, there's gonna be some local match. We probably have to do some private fundraising. Um, see if people are willing to contribute. I know there's. Been a lot of excitement. I mean, I've had a lot of people approach me and. Think it's a, a really worthwhile, good project, a lot of passionate bike riders out there. So, um. I guess today, just looking for a resolution or approval of that resolution. The good thing about it is. If we get this TAP money. You're not obligated to follow through with the project if we are unable to come up with additional. Match, yes. Um, it's kind of, Rick, and I think you refer to it kind of as a seed money type thing.
If you get this one, it makes it much easier to get the other grant.
Yep.
Because then you already got your pool started and they see that. So then it makes your other application's way more attractive.
Yep.
Right.
For the other grants.
For the other grant.
And, and the fundraising part of it.
Yes, yep, and I hope it doesn't happen, but worst case. You come up short with your fundraising or other grants, you give this money back and someone else takes advantage of it. It's. To me, it's a, it's a no lose.
Yeah.
No, because it's a, yes, and.
We're not hiring a grant writer, it's Matt.
Similar work with Webster County already.
So, uh, man, minimal cost other than, you know, the, the match event.
I bracken in my brain, but I know we did talk timeframes on this particular grant. Yeah, I know for getting applied for, so that's why you're here today, but what did Matt inform us when this is applied for? When is it, uh?
Years.
Well, when do they tell you if, if you're successful?
Oh, to use the money you need?
No, just to know about if your application went through.
The scoring is next Tuesday, which I believe this is thirteenth, maybe.
Well.
They get right after.
Yes.
Okay, so that, and then.
Monday is the thirteenth.
So it's a fourteenth then, I'm sorry.
Okay, you're good.
So then, yeah, what was our timeframe? Because we talked, this isn't. Like Rick said, it's, it's money, you know, if you get this grant, but it's, it's not something you need to know or do immediately.
What was our time? Twenty twenty eight.
Twenty twenty.
Construction.
So you would have.
Probably stretching into twenty twenty nine.
It was approved, so you're saying the approval would be fairly soon.
On this one point one million, yeah, you'll know next week whether or not.
Past that, it's utilizing it by twenty twenty eight.
Yes.
Am I saying this correctly?
Or at least be committed by twenty twenty eight.
Have a, have all of your ducks in a row in the planning and.
Preferably by twenty seven, so you get it engineered and designed.
Yep, yep.
That's gonna take some time.
So I'm just saying, I'm trying to recall our discussion, which was very, very good with Matt and everyone that day. That, that, once you see this, as Rick states, you know you have this money, you do have a timeframe to.
There's.
Other grants and.
Relatively large window for you to kind of get your ducks in a row.
That's what we, that's what I think really kind of pushed us is in that discussion to apply for this, is even though it is quite last minute.
Yeah, yeah, the whole tap thing is. You know what's coming, but they spring it on you and there's a, that is a very short window to get everything.
I know, Matt, I don't wanna appreciate it, a short window, but.
Yep.
Then when you have the time, if you get rewarded and the time to come up with other grants and monies and that for the project, you do have a timeframe there.
Correct.
They probably do that, so money can go to the bigger areas because they have more resources to write these grants.
Yep. To me, and Ford Dodge has done a, a great, I mean, and I would consider Ford Dodge bigger.
I know, it's, yeah.
And they've done really well, taking advantage of these funds. It's, it's okay if the smaller, the Humbolts of the world take advantage of a little bit of this in a while, so.
Well, I'm gonna make that motion. To approve resolution twenty twenty four oh five dash oh one.
Yeah, I'm in second that motion.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. I'm curious to know, but on this. Grant application, I mean, we won't know anything until it's all done, whether, what our match would be.
Towards the tail end of that window, twenty seven, twenty eight, Bruce, yep. Um, we will be applying for other grants throughout the process. If you want, I can kind of keep you updated as.
I'm all about it. I just wanna make sure because on one hand, we just got done talking about the dam and not wanting to spend taxpayer money. And now all of a sudden, if we do something like this, we have money that we could possibly chip in and I just wanna.
Yep.
Ask the question because I'll guarantee you. Um, two weeks ago, when we had the truth in taxation, there were several people that when they walked out, their last comment was what? Our taxes go up again next year, you can bet your, we'll be back. So I'm just, we're, we're all on the hook for a lot of things and if we write, if we're gonna write grants and we're gonna apply for money. That's great, but when we get to the point where. We gotta come up with a hundred thousand or we gotta come up with whatever that number is, you're gonna have people PO'd if we.
So there will be a local match, Bruce?
I know.
I'm being upfront with you, I'm not gonna be able to get this.
Being upfront too.
Yeah, so, and if that's not something you're comfortable with, I'm okay with that too. I'm just here to ask, that's.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, Matt, Matt, um, Costco down there, we visited with him. And, uh, he says there's a lot of other grants that you can go after, after this. And it's, might be somewhere in the ten percent range where the county. Has to come up with between county and private funds.
Okay, well. Under ten percent of four million is what?
Four hundred thousand.
Okay, that's the way I remembered Matt, but I'm just asking a question, so.
So we can fundraise just like everybody else.
That's exactly right, and you can bet your ass, people are gonna be standing in there saying, how much money do you raise?
Yep.
So. Just wanna make sure it's all, all on the same game here.
Yep, I agree with you. And then, yeah, like if you're not comfortable with it, that's fine. No, my plate's plentiful the way it is, so. Again, just here to get your thoughts.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll call a vote, Underberg.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Reimer.
No.
Lonnie.
Yes.
All right. Four one. Anything else? We would like to see about every quarter to let us know what's going on over there.
Yeah, I feel like it did.
Lately, but.
Yeah. Yep.
And I was out yesterday and looked at that house, that's, that's a nice looking facility.
The shelter house.
It will be popular. Um, I think it's something we can be proud of as a, as a county, as a community.
Very nice looking out there.
I think it'll be very busy.
Yes, I agree. So.
Trees growing and campsites around it.
Yep, that's next on the list, so I'll get on it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, excepting place on file, the annual jail inspection report. I think everybody got a copy of that. I forwarded on to everybody.
Yep.
We passed with flying colors the way I read it, so.
I think, uh, I sent a text out to Cory and Dean. And they wanted to give kudos to the failures and, um, that because they do a lot of work with that too, so. I probably wanna get caught up by Green Street someday. That'll be in a couple months.
Well, the options we have, if you don't, if we don't keep it up, we're.
Oh, yeah.
Good, so.
No.
For an older jail, it's good shape.
Yep.
We know what new ones cost.
Yes.
The millions.
Right. Yep, exactly. Lots of money.
All right, I'll make the motion to accept the place on file, annual jail inspection for three twenty four.
Sorry.
Any other discussion? All favorite.
All right.
All period. Okay, discussion action on sanitary and custodian position. We're talking with Paul, he'd like to stay full time for a while. And we need a custodian here in the courthouse. We need a sanitarian. I suggest hiring a full time person and put them in both.
I suggest hiring a full time person and put them in both. That would be my recommendation.
What was that again?
You take, uh, hire a full time person. Part time custodian, part time sanitarian. That way we've got both covered. Instead of trying to hire a couple of. Part timers, let's get, we ain't had any luck of hiring a part time custodian in what, for two months, three months? So my recommendation would be hire one person and have them do both jobs.
What would that, those, would that combined position, would that correlate with each, I mean, with as far as skills? Do you see what I mean? I'm just thinking skills and things like that.
Training. Sanitarium would have to go for training and they would be gone and not available for custodial work.
Yep.
Um, and if they're out on an inspection, they wouldn't be able to meet their.
If they.
It's.
This sanitarian work, he can make appointments to be at different places. Or she, whoever gets job and they can do the custody of work. Between jobs, between looking at septic tanks and wells.
I don't know, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about combining.
Yeah.
I think it'd be better to have somebody out at secondary roads, be a sanitarian and maybe would work with zoning and things like. To me, that makes more sense. It does a skill level better. I know I haven't talked to you about that, but I just.
We're not asking you to do it.
No, no, I mean, getting some, I mean, to me, that would make more sense to have somebody.
That's been kind of a thought process.
Kind of throwing that around. I think to me, that makes better sense than a custodian. Oh, that was good English. Yeah, and a sanitarian. I just don't, I don't see those two. No, I just don't, from an HR point and everything, I just don't see those two. Meshing well.
In wages.
Yes, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Responsibilities.
Yeah, everything. I can see it more out that way with.
Potentially something like you said along the plan, zoning.
And even helping with, um. Secondary roads draft, you know, that kind of stuff, you know, helping, you know, you had a, you had a on your budget assistant for how long?
Right.
And so couldn't a position like that kind of work together?
Yeah, um, I know Wright County, one of their assistants to the engineers, I believe, is the planning and zoning commissioner. There you go. Jeremy Abus is their. Zoning guy, um. They could potentially work as far as. Uh, hiring an assistant to send them to DMAC to get trained. Uh, assuming that they don't already have the prerequisite training.
A lot of them have that now that are. I mean.
Yeah, and location of where we're at is the difficulty. Like, I mean, those guys that get the degree from DMAC. Are usually scooped up by the metro as soon as they enter the program, like years before they graduate.
It's like our last guy over there that we had.
Train him and boom.
No, the, the one, the first one that went to school. Started doing a good job and then all of a sudden Wright County has this opening in the forestry and that's what he went to college for. So he jumped and bailed on us and and them and so we're just right back to square one. We're a small county that's trying to fill. Part time.
I think if we combine all the zoning, possibly helping with.
Design.
Thank you. And, um, and then also do the sanitarian. I think it all meshes well and wage, we could have a comparable wage. With that.
And you could have an office with file and cameras, maybe someone there to answer the phone or hand out things when they happen to be out on call or something.
Yes.
But it doesn't solve our. What's Dave's trying to come up with a solution to solve.
Right, and I get that.
We've had ads in the paper and you haven't found a custodian yet, a part time one. So, uh, that's the reason why I put it on there. Let's do something, cause we've gotta, we're gonna lose Paul if we don't.
I mean, is there any way we can do like a temp service that would be able to, um.
I guess it doesn't look very promising.
I mean, our church has done that because, because we just need a part time. So what we have, um, I can't remember what cleaning service comes in and they come in and help. And it's actually been cheaper to do that than it has been to hire a part time person.
You're able to get. Like.
Yeah, through a service. It's a clean, and maybe that would be to help us get through this.
Can you?
Yeah, I'll get that for you.
Our problem then.
The one anyways, is Great Tooth still in business?
Yeah, I don't think so.
I haven't seen anything in the.
I will comment, the, the city contracts meeting with, for the rec center, community center, city hall, I believe. So I, I could have Cole reach out to Trish and get her that contact.
Or anybody that.
Yeah.
We could at least.
Yeah, I think that's how we resolve hiring, you know, the service that we, that we, you know.
The only good thing with Paul is the furnaces and the boilers are not working, so.
He does have to.
He doesn't have to come up Saturday, Sunday to babysit them and make sure that they're.
This is the first weekend he has not been up here since November.
Problem has been we haven't been able to fill a part time custodial position.
Right.
Come up here on a mobility cart. I know, it's been very difficult. So I think these are good suggestions that should be looked into for said part time person and then. We've got some other thoughts on moving forward and Paul does find they wanna retire. What we might be able to do, but I have a question on the sanitarian. Someone was gonna check if the availability, at least a part time Wright County person.
Rick, let's only get back with me on that.
Someone, maybe a little closer to fulfill sanitarian.
Last week, cause we had that well water testing that they wanted done. So I said, I don't know if the board has talked to you about it, but. And she acted like they did.
Sandy.
McGrath. And she says she would be willing to do that to just.
Oklahoma has got a, somebody out of Powhatan County. That would help cover too. And she's talked to Sandy and we hear about part, part covering till Oklahoma can get another sanitarian hired. Um, said she had some applications, but she didn't have any good ones. Well, I just like to explore the option of. I'm looking at, if you got a water sample sitting in Thor's and you gotta come from. Powhatan County down here and we're paying Miley. I'd like to see what we could come up with on the Wright County side, at least temporarily for right now. If not, potentially a twenty eighty agreement in the future. But right now I'd like to get an answer if they're willing to.
Do we know if they've had any interviews or any luck with their position?
Just when I talked to her here a week ago.
And maybe we need to discuss for her, since we do share the cost.
July, our twenty eight with.
It does, yeah.
So it's.
So they know that they're not.
Just a sixty day notice.
Yeah, it's a six, yeah, yep.
But we should probably let them know.
Yes. Because. I would think so.
Well, the contract's up sixty days anyway.
So we, we have to re, yeah, re, re up it anyway.
Right, we get one up in July.
Yeah.
Cause she reminded me of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got a contract till the first, so.
Right. With this.
I will call Rick again and see if they've discussed it and see if we can work something out with them. That would be great.
Do you wanna look into maybe a joint thing with community area? Do you have the time to do that? A possibly gap or assistant, how that would all work if you could help manage that?
Yeah. Advertizing qualifications or anything. You're talking. Secondary on the sanitarian. And then as Randy gets closer to retiring, pulling in, planning zone.
Yep, that we guys think.
Well, we might wanna say something to Randy that we weren't trying to.
Right, right.
That's why I said.
That's why he said as he.
Just saying, he reads that in the paper that, oh my God. There, I just, so.
Could you bring us the numbers that we spend with Oklahoma next year? Or what we've been spending with them, just so we get a dollar amount.
It's.
Mileage is a big thing, cause the guy, the last guy that they hired, Kenny, he lives down by Fort Dodge. And what I understand, he got mileage if he comes his way or if he goes out of it.
Yep.
From Fort Dodge up.
That's a head, that's a heck of a job, isn't it? Where you get paid mileage to go to your dog?
Yeah.
I know, I'm looking the same way. Yeah.
That's what I heard.
I knew he was in Fort.
That's probably considered his home office. Yeah, and if we can break them numbers down from mileage and this and that. Just see what it's.
It was cheaper this last year, but.
Yeah, cause it varies amount of how much.
Right, what we do. Do you want me to call Randy and talk to him about, um, future, what we're talking about? This is all future as far as.
Can you hear me?
Hey.
Oh, you're on.
This, I just got on here.
I was like, what the heck?
Bruce, I, Bruce, I won't have to read it in the paper, so you're okay.
Well, I was gonna call you after.
I don't want the old teacher in you calling me and saying, what are you doing?
Like, I could call you a lot of things, but I won't.
I probably do, but.
I brought this, I brought this issue up a couple of years ago, when the sanitation person was, uh, being looked after or looked at. And, uh, I've got quite a few thoughts on it and, uh, I'm, I'm not prepared to discuss them all today. But, uh, uh, you know, it's something that I think needs to be, uh, sit down and looked at. I'm not exactly sure how that would happen. But, uh, I, I express the fact that, um, you know, it, it just makes sense zoning. Uh, you know, it's kind of a, you know, as needs basis and maybe the sanitation possibly. Uh, would be kind of the same thing and I don't. I'm, I'm not saying that, that, uh, you know, I have a solution right now, but I'd be more than willing to. Sit down and talk to, uh, talk about it and, uh, you know, so I'm, I'm just throwing that offer out. So I don't, I don't know how you'd wanna talk about it. I wouldn't necessarily wanna talk about it in a public setting, but, um.
Right, yep.
Nor would we.
Are, are you interested in sanitarian?
Um, I'm probably too old to learn.
Part time custodian.
No, I don't think so. I'm too old, I'm too old, I'm too old to learn, so. Anyway, just throwing it out there, you can get ahold of me, whatever, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Thanks, Randy. Maybe we can have a workshop or something with him.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea with Ben and Randy and. Are you, are you, are you?
He's still on it.
Okay. Did you hear that, Randy? We can probably have a workshop with all of us, talk about it.
Uh, yeah, that'll be fine. It probably wouldn't be for, uh, probably a couple of weeks, maybe three weeks that I'd be able to do that.
Okay. Yep, that'll work.
I'll send, I'll send out a text to you.
Okay. Thanks, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
All right, anything else on that? Moving on down, many reports, sure. All right, this past, uh, Thursday, May second, we had a kind of a special. In the interim in between meetings, decategorization meeting. So that was interesting. That was, uh, that Thursday afternoon, the categorization meeting. And that was my only official extra meeting last week.
I had no official meetings, but I did come in and meet with Paul. We had a small leak upstairs and, um. Northeast corner of the building. And we got ahold of our contractor who put the roof on and they came up immediately and took a look at it. And they're gonna fix it today. Yeah, it's all covered under warranty, so. Paul spotted it and he had some damp tile upstairs. So I had.
All right, on Friday, I went to, uh, up here to the courthouse and listened for the. With the opioid, uh, presentation that you heard this morning. I would remind people this Wednesday, the eighth, there's the mobile food pantry. Uh, for me, food arrives at one, the drive through starts at four thirty. I think it's still down at the fairgrounds. Um, I'll also let you know I'm going up to. Uh, Gretinger on Wednesday for a meeting up there with UGNO on some issues that. They are having with whether or not they're gonna reach place of person that's. In our office down here, right now they're using different people, whether Webster County or Wright County or whoever. Is coming over and also talking about possibly reducing some of our services, which aren't. Very good. In our opinion. And I'm not saying that services aren't good. I'm saying when we get our services cut, then that means nobody's sitting down there. If someone needs food, so I would rephrase that.
What happened the other day when they come in and told all the volunteers to get out?
Well, here's the deal. This is the way I understand it. We had the person that was working. And then they have all these volunteers that come in and did the work that that person was supposed to do. And then they weren't doing what they were requested to do. So they did away with the volunteers and. Now, it might be the situation where they may need some volunteers, so it's kind of. Volunteers have been awesome down there. That, I mean, right now they got more volunteers than they got. It's almost like they meet them out at the curb and take a. Food to them as opposed to people that are working there and that's through, uh, so we're, we're going up. And I'm gonna go up on Wednesday to the meeting at one o'clock and we're going to, there's a group of people that are on that. Board that are going to try to come up with some ideas as to what we can do.
The other issue with that, Phil, was liability though too, cause liabilities is getting to be such a big problem. If one of the volunteers would get hurt and things like that, that was the other, cause I'm on the pantry board now.
Well, I will gladly hand this hope from the two and say.
No, you're good, you're good. I got.
I just know that.
But that was the other big issue too, was, was the like, cause liability is getting to be such a, a huge problem right now.
Well, and we had some things going on that. Weren't kosher, put it that way, so.
Yes, so there's, there's a lot more to it.
I was just asking, I had a couple of calls and I said, I have no idea.
I've gotten phone calls to the point where it's like, you know what, I, if we can figure it out, we're gonna figure it out, so. Alyssa O'Conners is knee deep in this and, and, uh, so we're all trying to make it work.
I agree. All right, the, um, Monday, last Monday, um, the twenty ninth, I went to the, um, HCD A Business Network. I think you were there too, Rich Danz.
I was there.
Very, very good presentation from Iowa State, you know, as far as, um, our businesses in town, how they can use them to. Um, make improvements, very interesting. I really learned a lot. Um, that they, they can use their research people down there to improve processes here in town. For our businesses without having to pay their own engineer to do this. Is that, am I kinda wording that right, Dan?
No, I think there's a lot of.
There's a lot of potential. There's a lot of potential.
Lot of free.
Yes, yeah.
Opportunities, advice, resources available to local businesses, which I think they've used already, things like that. SBC and, and then hopefully there's a, a Cirrus type of program down there, Sandy, so yeah, it was a really beneficial speaker, was very very articulate, very, very knowledgeable of, of the program.
Made it fun.
Yeah, it was enjoyable.
Because it was a lot of information, but she made it so it wasn't dry. Which is always good. But yeah, there's a lot of things out there for our, our, within the whole county. They really want us to use their, their services and to get ahold of them and like Dan said, a lot of, some of it is you pay for it, but a lot of it is free. So that was, that was really good. So I want to encourage all of our businesses to come to these meetings or three times a year, I think is what they said, Alyssa said.
Four, I think, so I, I think they're available to uh, maybe Rick can help me out. I think they're available to our, our uh, our memberships that belong to HCD As. I'm not sure it's open to the general public.
Well, businesses, I mean.
Businesses, right, like they pay a membership fee to the HCD, to my knowledge, and so they're the ones that we prioritize.
Okay. So. And then I went to the same meeting that Bruce did on Friday with opioid. I think that opioid program is really gonna be get good. Um, good program I really do, and if we can get into the schools too with the vaping and everything. Um, that'd be great. And then as far as upcoming, Bruce and I are tomorrow morning gonna meet with uh the school and then Dean and Cory, we're gonna talk about the SRO and what, what there is in that to possibly move forward, hopefully for, for the sake of our schools. We, we need an SRO there.
What are, what are we looking at there?
The um school and um should be a joint thing. Um, but.
They're looking to see what their funding would be through the.
Yep, and I got this.
Say, and what it would take in order to try to put someone in place to.
Mm hmm. So what I.
Protection.
Right, and what I did is I did a um survey and I think I I can't even, I was gonna email that out there, but I didn't know if I got that done yet, but as far as all the um deputies in every county around us and then also ones that are about our size and what it is per capita and um so what they have for deputies also.
Good information to have.
Yeah, it is, that's what I thought I'd give that. Some got back to me and some um, I went on their websites. It was very interesting how different websites have different stuff. Some websites are like, I found out everybody who they, who they had and others I just had to call.
Hmm.
Yeah. And get that information. Everybody was very open to getting them. Of course, it's all public, but I mean, they were very helpful and for the ones I had to call. Yep, that's all I had.
Tell you, Dave, is the hearing, unless something has changed in the courts, the hearing for up north here uh is last Dean tells me different, is set for tomorrow.
Oh, good.
So hopefully that will sooner or later come to a head and we can have some closure on that.
Hope something happens up there.
Could that resolve?
Yeah, it'd be nice.
I did not have anything official last week. I'm busy over there today. Uh, safety meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
I will be here for about, well, about quarter after nine. I need to leave. I had signed up for the Food Pantry of Iowa meeting and I'll go there at ten o'clock tomorrow. Go find out what's going on with the food pantries. So. Is anybody else going up to that?
I was going to, but I have to go up north now. Alyssa, Alyssa's gonna go.
I figured I'd go up.
Alyssa and I can ride together. And then um.
And then uh Wednesday is the food pantry down at Fairgrounds. That's it.
And I would remind people that last time it was fairly fast.
Well.
So.
Fair, like.
Better, I mean, they start right after lunch lining up, but they won't uh start distributing food till four thirty. But last time it was forty-five minutes and they were done.
Wow, all, everything's gone.
So there's a lot of people that are in need, so.
I took a couple up, well, there's four of them that needed food. And I found out about a food pantry called Ruth. Ruth, I think it is. It was up to East Chain, Minnesota. Anybody can go up there. Uh, not sure the date's on it, but they, they go once a month. Costs you twenty-five dollars, you get two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars worth of food.
Wow.
Wow.
So I drove them up there and I was a good three quarters to a mile from the church that they was giving it at.
Oh, wow.
And we was there when we got up there around eight o'clock. They started serving at nine and it's different. You pull up, I want this order, so many orders. And okay, pull forward. You give them your money and then you pull forward and both sides, stuff gets put in the back of the vehicle. Pull on up halfway, both sides, stuff gets pushed back in. You pull up the last one, more stuff gets in. My van was completely loaded when I left there. Uh, gee whiz. And the last, last one, he shut my lid and he says, you're good to go. They didn't ask no names, no income, no nothing. But it's through Ruth, I think it is. I can tell you here right quick. But they have it throughout Minnesota and Wisconsin.
Hmm.
And it's just about every, every time you turn around, I think. Um, find it here again. Ruth, or Ruby's.
Ruby's.
Ruby's Pantry. And this was at East Chain and they, they said they started at ten o'clock. Well, we didn't get out of there until noon. Of course, we was way back and when I got up and turned to the church, that line was still three quarters of a mile back.
Hmm.
Then back where I started. But it's twenty-five dollars, okay, first year donation. Ruby's Pantry is for anyone looking to extend their monthly grocery budget. There is no income or residency, residency requirement. This time they got a, a big turkey breast. I mean, that thing was like a volleyball. They had frozen desserts, juice, fresh produce, assisted refriger, associated refrigerated groceries, bread. I think each order they got was like five or six different kinds of bread. Tortillas, fresh potatoes. Uh, there was an eight pound bag, a bag of potatoes, canned vegetables, taco shells, pasta meat, meal, popcorn in a bag, cheese sauce, and the cheese sauce was a gallon of beer. Then you had drinks, uh, I think we had in, each one of them got an eight pack of uh Sprite. But it, it varies every time. Breakfast bar, chips and a solar pantry groceries. And they, they had canned goods and the list changes all the time.
Get whatever they can get donated or spoiled.
Right. But. That's something to think about. I think they told me that the next one, there was gonna be one in Mason City, the second Tuesday at four o'clock. And I'll have to find out where it's at, but you can go onto Ruby's Pantry and you can find out where this is. This was in the East Chain, which is just across the border of both Sway City.
Yeah. We used to go that way to go up to Emogene up there and get on the interstate.
Yeah, that's where I go.
We went to send the kids up in Brookings.
Don't have to go through Fairmore.
Right, yeah, so that's a really nice little.
Yeah. But that, that church is on that straightaway and then you turn and go back to East Chain.
Mm hmm.
And then you turn and go back up to Grenada, but it's right off of the end of there. But yeah, we got up there early and where in the heck do you go? Where's the end of the line? Clear down there. They dig enough gravel and burn around. But I wanna find out from the Food Bank of Iowa what's going on. That's why I signed up to do up here more often.
I think I believe in the fact that they stressed for the amount of people that they're trying to provide for and the ink or the donations seem to be down and uh so.
We'll see what's going on. Anything else to come before the board?
Motion adjourned, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At ten twenty-six. Thank you all.
Man. Thanks for letting me chime in today.